Good afternoon, good night, wherever you might be. It's me again. We regroup again. It's an after-bury. Today, I'm inviting you to come up and listen to what we have. What we are trying to put together for Union Island. We must commend through the prayer, bring the most high in it. Let's bow our heads and pray. Almighty God, we thank you for the day. Thank you for the evening. Thank you for the crowd that is gathering and those listening at home or wherever. Those intend to come on, bring them here safely. We ask that all our intentions be put to you and you will help us in the way forward. In your name and with your presence, I say thank you. Amen. Mr. DJ, give me some music now lively of the place. Here we have some truth. The truth is that we are all without roofs. The truth is that we are fractured. The truth is that we still are alive. The truth is that we are a determined people and we will rise from the ashes. This evening, I'm representing a group named the Union Island Interim. Remember that. Interim. We're just trying and we're here to garnish your support, to gather your support. That's why we are an interim group. We are hoping that we can help the struggling people, including myself and all of us here, who went through and happened to survive burial. She was not an easy lady. She came here with a vexation and she did her job and left us with what we have now. We cannot sit and wait for someone from the outside to come and help us. We are welcoming and we have welcomed and we will continue to say thank you to all the foreign people. We are a small nation, that we know. We are not a wealthy nation, that we know. Hence the reason we on the ground here from Union Island must come together. And in coming together, we can put our heads and minds together, hands and strength to help each other in the way forward. Without much ado, Mr. DJ, welcome the president, our interim president, to the microphone.
Give thanks, greetings and blessings. Welcome everyone. We had a meeting previously in Clifton. You know our community is divided into two, Ashton and Clifton. So what you do in Ashton? What you do in Clifton? We do in Ashton. Two completely different community on the island. Even thanks this afternoon for the Recovery Council. We formed the Recovery Council due to the cries of the people of Union Island. The people crying out, they don't know what is going on. They don't have any idea what the government is doing. They seeing people coming in, doing stuff, things are happening and we are being ignored. So we are here to be the voice of the people of Union Island. The name of the council is Recovery Council. Do you have any issues, any problems concerning the island? You need help with anything that we can, we will try our best to handle it, to take care of you, to give you information so we could all have knowledge. Now, the Recovery Council is here to empower, empower the persons that the government put in charge. We're not here to go against anyone. We are here to strengthen them. We are also here to empower the people. So the people, especially young people, can have a voice. Because your voice is important. We want to know how you feel, what you think, what are your needs? So we can take it to the right persons. So we want to empower you so you have a voice. Don't be scared to talk because if you don't speak up, no one would hear you. You have to say what you need, what you want. This island belongs to all of us. Even the foreigners coming in, they're doing their part while they're here. Transformation. The island is transforming. It is transforming from all, the whole habits into something new. Right now, we used to have regular fan. Now we have solar fan. We didn't have lights, so we use solar lights. Now that Vinlek, we have the crossroad in Ashton and Vinlek give us electricity. So Ashton Cross Road has a street light. I appreciate the Vinlek company for putting the pole at that height and giving us electricity. We are grateful for the Vinlek company and the work they are doing. We appreciate what they are doing. The sun is very hot and they work tirelessly until into the 6, 7 o'clock at night. So we appreciate, we want to empower Vinlek. We want to empower them. We pray that they're transforming from all, the whole, until. So we pray that they would not bring that sort charge as high as they had before. So we keeping an eye on Vinlek. We keep an eye on them. That is our purpose. Union Island will not be the same. We have a clean slate and we want to make Union Island better. We cannot be doing the same old thing. All of us have to work together to bring the island into a beautiful place. We want our tourist industry to be bigger than anyone else in the Grenadines. Union Island people will work tirelessly to keep Union Island clean. We want each and every one to be their brothers keeper. We want Union Island people to take care of Union Island. We are transforming into something new. We want Union Island to be better, clean, crime-free. We are crime-free now. We want to keep it that way. The police don't have much work to do. I want the police and them to be happy being in Union Island, not stressed. And in doing that, we have to come together as a people. That is how Union Island will be transformed. Now we have to adapt, adapt to new beginning, new rules, new ideas, new infrastructure. Right now, the children is adapting because the school, three in one, three school in one building. So the children have to adapt to that for the moment. We have to, we are adapting to different changes within the community. The Recovery Council is here to help you move forward with adapting to any new function that is taking place. We want you to voice your opinion. Everyone will get the opportunity tonight to come to the mic and give your grievance, voice your opinion. Let us know what your need is. Let us know what your complaint is. So we come today to have this town hall meeting. It will not be the first or the last. We will continue having meetings so people can get information, people can view and voice their opinion and let us know what you need. Like I said before, we have to be our brothers keeper. We have to watch out for each other, take care of Union Island. And I appreciate you listening here. I pray God that we continue in unity and peace. I pray God that we will take care of each other. I pray God that we will keep our children safe. I pray God that we'll keep our island clean. We want the best for Union Island. So in that saying, I would turn it over back to our commentator, give thanks.
Blessings. Don't worry, this is the message. And the message is that we are here to help to move Union Island forward. That's why we are... That's why we are a interim body. Next person on the microphone would be our vice president, interim vice president, Mr. Matthias Alexander.
I want to say good evening to everyone present here. Thank you for coming. As we continue this town hall meeting, I pray that you will understand us along with. It is not political, it is not politically and it's not documentally, neither denominationally. It's we the people think, okay? So when we gather here, we gather here as one. Just like of all, we had problem in our villages, both Clifton and Ashton, with getting things done. So what they form is something they call Union Island Friendly Society. And that society goes on for years now, although they're saying nothing cannot last in Union Island. But I doubt it, I keep doubting it. See, if how nothing cannot last and our friendly society who are hundred and plus years have still going. So my people, I'm calling it. I can say in this whole saying, children of Union Island, we are brothers and sisters all. Children of Union Island, answer to your call. Let your voice be mingled, lift your heads and sing. God save our whole nation and God will continue to save us again. Children of Union Island, our fathers fought and died that you may wear a noble banner with honor and pride. Children of Union Island, listen to your call. Your fathers, they fought, they strove, they perished just to see this little island of ours arrive in everything. My dear people, to do so, we must be united. Because united we stand, divided we will fall. And that is why even the call building, Union Island Friendly Society, which is friendship and... Now for us to go forward in every aspect, this interim Recovery Council is here to enhance business for we the people of the community. I have to say we, I mean to say every one of us. Because there is non-governmental organization out there who is willing to aid us. But because we do not have things set up in this manner like interim committee and other, they don't know who to get on to so they can send whether money, whether goods or whatever it is, materials or everything, that we can move on while we waiting on the government with the alibi. My dear people, we come to you to present the Union Island Recovery Council. And we are asking your support that we can carry on this council. And we don't want to leave it here. It must be on because we want to pass it to our children and our children, children. Because, let's take for instance, in early time, like Grenada, they had problem with hurricane. Dominica, they had problem with hurricane epidemic. Think of it, we was the hands was given because we give the hand as they call it because it's all brothers and sister. Let us deal free from Africa, they drop us here, there and everywhere. And now we didn't expect that our turn will reach, but it catch us in surprise. But thank God that we are alive and the children of the island are standing back. We have, we reached to the end now to receive. But let us not feel dismayed because we did not put ourselves together. It is for a reason. So now we organize ourselves, trying to organize ourselves with an interim committee called the Recovery Council. And we are trying our best to do whatever we can that the outside world could have their say to help us do more than more. So my dear people, as I am saying and as you know, that things are all here, there and everywhere. And we are worried because you know, all we want back is our roof. We are talking about our roof here and there. We know everything will happen one time because it's thousands of roofs that gone and it take time. But what I'm trying to say and already said, it's like if we had a council set up like this, or organization like this, you know, we would have received aid from non-governmental organization that will help us ahead of time by the time I say the government is lobbying. Because you know with government, they get their demon opposition in the House of Parliament and they are going to do this, talk this, 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 before they come to the people which and while we are still in hell and they're doing well and they are saying. But nonetheless, it's a government system, that's the way the system works. So what I'm saying as well, if we had ourselves together, when things happen in Grenada, Dominica and elsewhere, we had set this up, we'd be far more advanced. But thank God for life that it's still not behind. It is the time, maybe it's our time to tell us, this is your time to set, put your house in order and work together with the international community that need to be recognized around the world. This storm come to us and it come for our good. It looking bad because our house is destroyed, yes. But it helped to put our little island on the map of the world, all these little island. Because the international community that was here in St. Vincent and the Grenadine, believe you know what island, not knowing there's a chain of little islands around. So now what the UN is saying, they want to keep us on their data, different to the mainland. So we are in the groove with the international community. So brothers and sisters, let us stick together, I'm asking each and every one, like young people, to join in as floor members so we can broaden this organization. Because it's for you the people, you the young people, not me again. I'm here to stand because you know, I mean, I'm elderly and my time will be out. And we want the children and our children, children to continue this legacy. Just like I said, I continue to say the Union Island Friendly Society of, that we can put things in place for ourselves. Now, let us not forget our little island. I can sing a nice little song to you all that can lift Union Island up. In the old days, when things is rough, we always come in Union Island, the greatest desert there was. Last time I tried to get it, then I couldn't get it. And I can give you how Union Island was beautiful and that's, this is the whole we used to sing. The voice is not nice, it's not of the Maori, very, but I tried. I used to sing it like this. There is a little island in the Caribbean sea. An island where the princess palm is waving in the breeze. An island where the corn and peas and red fish and sea island cotton too. Union Island is its name. We are out to build a better Union Island. We are out to build a better Union Island. We are out to build a better Union Island. It must have fireness. Yes, my dear people, thank you very much. You have wanted in Kristin, you know, but I said, no, you can't give Kristin, I'll gotta leave something back Washington. This little village of mine where I go to school, my last day is there and this was my old school day. So gotta leave something for Washington. Okay? A good night, thank you very much. Yes.
Well done, well done, young man, good things. Who feels it knows it, boy, when you see a rain cloud set up with, the problem is, oh God, I'm a thing them gonna wet up again. Who feels it really knows it? I have another brother I want to bring for you. His name is none other than Mr. Roseman Adams. Roseman, come for the mic.
Good night, everyone. Now, I believe this is the time for us to be able to speak on matters that are affecting us. This is the time where we give everyone the opportunity to speak up. When I just stole a few minutes of that time, just to say something. I find we very quiet here. And I know we hurting, all of us.
Yes.
Who here not hurting?
Whoa.
Show me a hand. If you're not hurting, show me a hand. You see? Nobody put up their hand? All of us are hurting.
Yes.
All of us feeling it. Am I correct?
Yes.
And are you, are you comfortable with what is happening? Are you comfortable with the few things that we are dealing with? You think that we could be further than where we are today?
Yes.
We in one tree, right?
That's right.
This is the third month. And many of us want to have our roofs covered, right? But we still don't know what's going on. And you see, if we speak in a single unit, a single person, you think you're gonna be hard? Do you think you're gonna be hard when you speak by yourself? So this is why we have to speak together. Are you guys hearing me there?
Yes.
You think we can speak together?
Yes.
So we have to make sure that we get the information. And the way in which we get the information is by asking questions.
Yes.
And this Recovery Council, the interim Recovery Council, is supposed to be one of the bodies that is supposed to make sure that each and every one of us know what is going on. Do you trust that we will be able to give that information? Do you think that we be able to give that information? I can't hear all the man. Do you think we gonna be able to give that information? Yes, we will be able to give you that information. And when you get that information, are you gonna sit back with it and do nothing? Or are you going to get up and get what is yours? Are you going to get up and get what is yours? I can't hear all the man.
Yes.
This is not Union Island, I hear. The Union Island, I know we are, we are always what, fighters, right?
Yes.
We don't take nothing like that. We get up and we get what is ours. Am I correct? So we be quiet, man. We have beaten. And what happened? Your back's broken or what? No, man. We are supposed to be a resilient people. We are supposed to be a strong people. And we have to show that the world is there to help us. But if we go there lame like that, waiting up, we have to show the world that we will fight for what is ours and we'll be happy to receive whatever they give us. So we are not going to just sit back and take anything. If we don't get it from one place, we will get it from somewhere else. If we don't get it from this, we gonna get it from that. But we need to get what it is that we need to get. And the things that we need to get what? Over we head what? Shelter, roof. We need to get cover because why? We are in the middle of the hurricane season, right? We don't know if another one is going to come. We don't know if a simple thing as a tropical wave is going to come. And those tar poles that we have on our, over our heads, that will be blown away in a second and we will live the horror once more. So it's important that we get that over our heads. But we do not sit down and wait and wait, get up and get. If we not get it from one place, then we get from another. But we have to get up and get. We have to get up and empower those in front of us, those that have been placed in front of us to do the things that need to be done for us. We have to get them to speed it up. We have to make sure that what has come for us, we get it and get it in a timely fashion. Am I correct? So we have got to stop being silent. We have got to start to speak up. Are we gonna stay silent?
No.
I can't hear all the man. So we gonna speak up, right? Are we gonna do this together, right? Well, I'm counting on you all and I know you all counting on us. And we gonna get this done. So make sure that you tell each and every one, we working together. What is the name of this place? Union what? Do you think we just work in unity? We have to start to do that. We have to start to work in unity and make sure that we get what is ours. So I don't want to take too much of the time. I could go on and on. But now is the time for those persons to be able to come up and speak up. And I believe there's a lovely lady who wants to say something as well, but I'm gonna let the emcee deal with that. So thank you for giving me that little time and have a good night, everybody. Let's enjoy the rest of it. Thank you.
All right, tonight's gonna be a good night. Tonight is a wonderful night. Hey Father, we ain't getting no rain, thank you Jesus. Closing won't wait tonight for the people with no roofs. I have a nice lady here, very young and interesting from just in the crossroad too. So she know this, she know this, she on Union, she born right here in the crossroad there. Her name is Miss Carolyn Hudson. Hudson, here is your mic. Give her round.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to, wanted one of you guys to clarify. I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands what the mission of this organization is. So if you can clarify that. Also, what is the main focus right now during the recovery process? Because I am, and I'm not saying that this is true, but what I'm hearing on the ground is that there's materials there to fix the roofs, but I'm hearing people saying that they are not getting it, they have to beg, they're only getting drips and drabls of whatever it is. And it's becoming dehumanizing in order to get what was sent for the residents of Union Island, in order for them to get a roof over their head so that life can start again. So I'm wondering if this organization would be able to help with getting those barriers broken down, if they exist for real, from what I'm hearing? And get the process flowing easier so that people can get on with their lives? Because the most important thing, of course, as we have mentioned, is to have a roof over your head and then once that happens, then things, you can start rebuilding your life. So hopefully someone can address this.
Thank you, Carolyn. Now, your first question was a purpose. We had explained earlier on. We had explained earlier on, the purpose of the Recovery Council was basically to make sure that we get what we're supposed to get. And in doing so, we try to make sure that we empower those that are placed to help us and to make sure that we as Unites are also empowered to make sure that we get what is there for us. Now, on the issue of the materials, the Recovery Council has to understand from those persons who have been placed there to assist us, what the process is, why that process is there, and if there are any clutters, why that clutter exists. So those are the things that we need to understand. And we also need to understand how is it possible for us to assist, to eliminate that clutter, to make sure that the process is much smoother in people receiving the materials and the aid that they're supposed to get. So we have to make sure that things become smoother and easier, much more efficient. Brothers that we have been, that have been placed there to do distribution, to administer and for to even works, they, I don't believe that they know it all. And it's definitely that they would need some help. And so, we in the Recovery Council will try to make sure that we give them help in getting the job done. So I hope that that does answer your question. Anyone else? Who have a question or suggestion or something that they wanna share that needs to be brought to the table so that they could be one of the persons in focus? Like, for example, you have persons on the island who are suffering from diabetes. And some people, they don't like to make it public. You know, some people feel it's a very private issue and they don't want to come out and say it loud. But having diabetes is a very serious thing. And there are certain things that you need, especially insulin. You need to have that insulin. And when you have the insulin at home, you also need to have it chilled. And if you don't have power at home, you can't have a chill, meaning a generator or some form of power to keep it chilled. And so, keeping quiet, nobody knows that you're in that need. So when you speak up, and there are a number of persons who may have spoken up that were able to receive a generator because they spoke up. So that process helps. So if there are persons here who may have a specific need, you may not have, come on the mic, but you can come to one of the persons here and whisper it to us. And so we will try our best to make sure that, that need is built. There are times when people come and they say they don't have enough water. We try to push for more water come, come to the island. So if there's anyone who wants to come on the mic, great. My brother Michael wants to come on the mic. Thank you, man. Yes, my brother. Good night to everyone.
Night.
I'm gonna say thankful to this, all of you who make it. Who make you all for this disaster. Put a time to put this body together. And everybody should be thankful for that. Because everybody going through their problem. You going through your problem, we going through too. And we, everybody should understand what you guys are going through. And we should stand hands in half, what you are. Another thing, I would like to see this, this, uh, working team come together. I would like to see you guys with a uniform. So we're not gonna be like any, oh, we understand what this, what this is all about. The, um, another thing again, affect me. The water was given to people. The bottles are throwing alongside the road. The food that they're eating, some of those things are throwing in the street. I myself been walking and taking up something. We need to get all these things together to have a better Union Island. Otherwise, we will always face nothing, what burial have done for us. So we have to put hand in hand together to build back this country like how we want it to be. Or even better, than how it was before. The other, the other thing again, I'm asking this community, it might be now, but later on, once every month, let us come together to clean, as an, oh, there are people trying us to clean once in every month.
Yeah, yes, yes, yes.
Thank you, brother Mike.
Well said, yes.
That's a beautiful suggestion.
Yes.
Every month, we should come together and do an island clean. You know, we pride ourselves that we have a little thing that's called tourism. And there are many people who try to visit us. And when they come, they need to come and see a clean island. Am I correct?
Yes.
Brother Mike, go right on the ball, you know? And the issue with our plastics, our bottles. Earlier on, we were trying to see if we can get more garbage bags given to homes so that they can put plastics in it, plastic bottles in particular. However, that message didn't go far and wide, I think we need to go back to that. To make sure that all the homes, shelters have enough garbage bags to put the plastic bottles that we receive water in there so that we can do some sort of recycling. Because again, soon we'll be going into our tourism season. And we're going to try to gather as much money as we can because none of us have earned regular money as we would normally do. Those months gone. So we need to get back on track. Am I correct? Alright, is there anybody else who would like to take the mic? I see a gentleman stepping up. Yeah. So who would like to take the mic? I see brother with picking the mic.
Greetings, Thor. One of the things that we are here to do is to be our brothers keeper. And we can do it by going around, visiting some of those folks who are in the shelters, speaking with them, talk with them, find out what are some of their problems. And going and do that, I have been doing that for the since after burial. And a lot of the times, we wonder why a sum of our people are still in the shelters. But the long and short of the story is they are there because they don't have a roof over their head. Where they used to live is no longer existed. And some of them are willing, if a piece of top pole is placed on the roof, they will go back there and dwell in their home. Because there is where their comfort are and they can meet their needs, try to cook something for themselves. They are willing to help themselves. As we all know, Union Island is a land of unity. But sometimes we tend not to display that in public. But in our heart, we have a mindset for each and every one of our brothers and to be our brothers keeper. We are a resilient people. As history tells, when things are not doing right, we speak out and we act out. We are not here to fight against anybody. We are here to try and work together for the betterment of our people. In nineteen seventy-nine, on the fifth of December, there was a general election in Saint Vincent and Grenadines. And the cry of the people was hoping that the government then would have changed so that the people of the Grenadines in particular, supporting the opposition leader at that time, thought that he would have won the election. And I can remember on the sixth of December, I was sitting right, I miss Idris Dunstap there, and a call of people, all the senior citizens of the island, Hamal, Tantima, Miss Popo, Tantimili, Tanjeen, Wali. And you could name all those senior citizens that come out and say, wow, we could do now? Because James Fitzgerald Mitchell, who was the opposition leader, did not, did not, win the election. And we know, we were told, like, we're gonna eat salt or we're gonna suck, we don't eat grass and suck salt. But Union Island people are the people who over the years have strived and fought and do all in their powers to develop this little bit island that we have here. The people of Union Island, both before me and even before my parents, there was the merchant owners, vessel captains and owners for years that were flying the trade from Argentina in the south to Florida in the north, all along the Central American coast, Panama, Nicaragua, Honduras, Belize, you name it. They were all right in those trade, those, those routes. Cuba, Hispaniola, Puerto Rico, you name it. And out of that, we had some of the most productive sailors on the National Boat and the House Line where we make a name for ourselves out there in the international world as seaman, sea captain and seafarer. Brothers and sisters, we have a country to build. And with all the determination, the muscles, the strength, the spirit that we have, we can rebuild Union Island to what it was pre-burial and even better than it was then. Our education system right now is in shambles. Why? Because of several reasons. I know time and time when we had representatives from Union Island who were top scholars at some of the leading institutions in Saint Vincent. We can still do it and we are going to do it in the future. We have engineers and other scholars who have been England after the Second World War where there was a heavy repatriation or how should I put the right word is? Migration of nationals and citizens of Union Island. Going to be build London after World War Two. And one person was such person who experienced that experience in London after Hurricane Beril said to me, this disaster reminds me of the day I landed in London. And I look at all the destruction around Union Island reminds me on the second of July, what that was, what it was like there in London and the other European countries, the cut off the war. We had a natural disaster. It wasn't a man-made war, it wasn't a man-made disaster. Although evidence could show in the higher extent that it is otherwise. Brothers and sisters, we have a country to build. And if we don't do it, if we don't get together, if we don't go around and see the need of our brothers and sisters and work together to make sure that every roof is being covered, every citizen of Union Island, Saint Vincent and Grenadines, the rest of the Grenadines have the best coming out of burial. If we fail to do that, we'll be failing our children in the future to come. We have a country to build and we can build our country by putting mechanism in place to make sure that the necessary things are made available, made available so that our people, it is readily available to our people. We have them on the ground and lift them. But for some reason, there's a bottleneck. And one of the reason for that bottleneck is because there isn't assessors on the ground who is going around making a serious assessment and coming up with the priority homes that are needed or the priority roofs that are needed to cover. We have senior citizens who are dying in Saint Vincent presently now, begging to be, um, to be sent back home. But their roofs are not yet covered. How can we find ways and means of doing these things? My brother to my right here, he has his roof in Kristin. He's out here speaking, but his roof is to be covered. Matthias Alexander. And he cannot even get the help, physically, materially and otherwise, to have his roof covered. It hurt me sometimes to know that I am only one person and I know several of you here can say the same thing. Because if we could have thrown one another to make sure that the things that we want to see happen here on Union Island happen in a more spiritually manner, it will be to the best advantage and benefit to the people of this, our beloved community. Brothers, I say a nation that feeds itself is a strong nation. And we here in Unite and have a serious problem where we can't even plant, this is just the, the peak of our rainy season. But when you look around, there is nothing but shrubs and vines growing in the community. We hear of zero hunger. We hear of backyard gardening. We hear of all these other things, means and ways of people empowering themselves in order to feed themselves to eliminate or cut back on the import of foreign goods and services that we get from overseas. Thank all the technology and everything that is out there. But with more tangible help from our local authority, putting in place the necessary or enforcing the laws that are on the books where they're plus animals and season is concerned. Because as far as we know, in the past, we has a community of understanding where you let your animals go in the morning and make sure that they are pet in the evening. But it seems a lawlessness takeover where that is concerned now. And we have to respect every one of us and people who are making the sacrifice to put the seed in the ground in order for it to grow. Let us please tie up our animals and make sure that we protect our brothers and sisters produce and their hard labor and service that they render in this community. Brothers and sisters, let us continue to work together for one another in the best interest of our community. Let the children, let our children see that we are a resilient people and hardworking and hardworking and the common people to rebuild our community, Union Island. Thank you. Any brother another round of applause? And it isn't an easy thing to do, you know. When it comes to clean up Union Island, Union Island didn't go dirty just by Berrier. Union Island has been going dirty long before Berrier. Berrier come and show us how dirty we are and how much we need to get cleaned up. Lot of the vine and bushes, me no know where they come from. When me left home, they was near. I come home and I see them. Me long time root them out. It needs a community to keep a community clean. Needs an educated community to know that when you have a damn thing they wrong you land, them bring mosquito and fly and stuff. And when they dry, they don't just that dry. They dry and spread more when they come green again with the next green weather. That's all me going to say. And it go go to the brother road. Thank you very much. Say, anyone else would like to say something? Suggestion from Miss Caroline.
I'm aware that during the tourist season, the high season, that Union Island brings in quite a lot of revenue. And I'm wondering if it's, it could be a mandate of this committee to have some of that revenue remain on the island, if that is not a thing, remain on the island so that we can continue rebuilding and have a reserve for upkeep. Because if everything flows out and as you see, nothing really flows in, then it will continue to be a difficult situation. So if there are percentage, I think that can be lobbied for somehow, a percentage, and if the community goes up against it or for it, I should say. So whatever the percentage, so let's say for the month, it brings in a hundred thousand, and we want to remain on Union thirty percent, maybe that is being optimistic, too optimistic, but let's say thirty percent to remain in the pockets of Union Island for whatever that needs to be done on island so that we can continue to have this island operated and operated.
Yeah, 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 yes, yes, very important point, yeah.
And I do agree, seniors should get their homes restored. That should be, that should be something that should be done first. And according to your suggestion with the cleanup, I would say also, and we mentioned this in Clifton, keep Union Island clean, have that slogan, have something that's being blasted all the time, keep Union Island clean. And have each person be responsible enough that you will tell your partner when they're drinking and dropping the stuff on the ground or eating and dropping stuff on the ground, hold them accountable, you know, and tell them, pick it up, put it in the trash. And each, just hold each other accountable, and that will go a long way as well, yes.
So true, so true. That is so true. Beautiful suggestion. I hope we'll be able to focus on some of those.
That would be nice.
Very good. And going back to what Weiner said earlier on. Now, someone had told me earlier today of a particular woman that had a great need. I mean, everybody have their need, yes. But this particular lady, she lost her roof like everybody else, right? But where she is living, it's where she is in the shelter. And every day she goes home, does a little chores and she goes back to the shelter to sleep. Now, as Weiner was saying, the assessors are not there to look at the priorities or the priority persons that should be looked at first. Now, this woman, why I mentioned her is the fact that we are in our rainy season, our wet season. She doesn't have a roof on her house. She is unable to collect drinking water to take her through the next dry season. Now, many of us who are close to the road, we know that water is being transported to each and every house. It is collected in buckets or in drums or in your tanks. And that is well and good. But where this woman lives, the vehicle cannot go there to take water. So imagine if she doesn't have a roof put in place now. When the dry season comes, what is going to happen to her? She is not young enough to take that bucket on her head. She is not young enough to hold a bucket of water and carry it in her hand that distance from the nearest road. So I think persons like her need to be placed on the forefront, on the front burner. I deliberately held back her name, but over time, everyone will discover who that is. And I think the recovery council will have to try our best to make sure that she comes to the forefront. I think that is the essence of the recovery council, to try to make sure that the priorities are looked at and met. So that's just an example. Anyone else who wants to step up? We're coming close to the end. So someone is coming. Nice. Yes, Miss Ramage is here. Say a few words. Give her a little round of applause.
As a sponsor, ladies and gentlemen, uh, yeah, I'm standing in front of the famous Ramage's shop. Ramage standing in front of the famous Ramage's shop. Yeah, I want to say something like what Caroline says, like the water problem, like I'm being told, okay, in battle, they are being asked, how many people live in battle for them to come and drop water. Um, so that's, that's why the problem. Because if you have to look at how many people live in where, and that's your job, you take the job to go and deliver water, and you're asking how many people live there, you can't come there because there are not much people, that's a problem. So we have to look at little things like that, what is happening. And another thing I'm looking at again, how publicized, I'm surprised, not much more people than this turn up to this meeting. Because we are a lot more in numbers in Ashton, and I'm surprised that there are not much more people at this meeting. The name is Union Island, Union Island. Unity should be, we should be together, together. And what, when, when we come together, what happens? We accomplish a lot because we are stronger in number. So let us be together in unity. And like that, we could conquer a lot of things, a lot of things. Right? So let us remember, young ones, old ones, let us unite. Unity hovers a lot, hovers a lot. And like for roofing and what I see going on, like, I agree. Like the people who are in shelters, definitely, they should be, you know, upfront. They should be like the number one, to get the roof over their heads that they could return to their home. And the older folks, definitely, right? And people who live in remote areas, like for water, like Mr. Adam says, they should be looked after. They should be like upfront, number one, like delivering water and so forth. Without water, life, life can't exist without water. You need water, the main essential, right? So let's come together and do things the right way. We know that everything can happen in an instant, not the same time. But those who are in number one priority, who have number one priority, let us look at that first and then we'll take it from there, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, Mrs. Ramage.
But I did not know if the town is here.
Wow. Do we have to do a little better with spreading the word? Yes. Thank you for coming. But that's very nice of you. And for those who are watching in the diaspora, Princess was saying that she didn't know much about the meeting and she heard us on the mic, and so she came forward to listen. So we, we, I believe, have dropped the ball with getting the word out there. So in future, we will do much better, right? So sorry about that, and to those who didn't know earlier on, we are sorry that we wanted to reach you, but we will try our best to do much better in the future. Now, quickly before Miss Vasani takes the mic, to go to the point that Mrs. Ramage made. Now, I have a question to ask, and this is what the recovery council is all about. Now, is there water station in the, in Bordeaux area?
Bordeaux, Bordeaux, no.
We say Bordeaux, but it's Bordeaux.
Yeah, but we say in Bordeaux.
Right, let me say Bordeaux like how we say it. But the correct one is Bordeaux, it's French. Yes, so is there water station in Bordeaux? No, there is not a water station in Bordeaux. So with that information, we can now go to Water Mission, that is one of the groups that's on the island that is doing that wonderful work of setting up these water stations so persons can get access to drinking water. So that conversation is going to be had, and hopefully in the near future, you will see a water station in Bordeaux. They will go, assess the area, see the best place to put it where most people will be able to get water easier, and so they will put it there. So again, look forward to seeing that happen in the near future. Let me give the mic to Mrs. Vasani, I think she wants to say something.
Greetings, I almost forgot my point, I don't even think I remember my point.
Oh, my Lord.
Greetings again for the second time. What is happening in Union Island? Some people receive the information, there is a meeting. But what I notice is happening, people are not taking what we are doing serious. They're not coming out and voice their opinion. I think some people feel that if they speak up, they won't get the roof. Let me explain something to Union people. Whether you speak up or you don't speak up, your roof will be built, it have to. We cannot survive without our roof. Money has been given for us to receive our roof. Stop grumbling. Get your estimate and take it in. And make sure, do not go and argue with the persons dealing with it because they have a lot on their plate. Please be disciplined in acting and trying to find out. If you need us to find out, come to us and we will do, they find it out for you. But we have to speak up. Union people are not speaking up. We are sitting by the road and su-su-su-ing, talking behind the back. Stop that. We need to come to the public, come to the mic and speak up. Don't be ashamed or afraid to speak. It's a democratic right. We live in a democratic country. You have the right to speak. And don't make no one take that right from you. Because if you allow it, then we no longer a democratic country. I want us to be able to speak, don't argue, don't stress people, don't curse people, just speak up in a nice fashion, nice manly way. Because Union people, we, we have pride. And sometimes we shy and say we don't want to be bothered. But there's a pressure on us now. The cost, the loss is heavy. It's not just your roof. It's your fridge, your stove, your furniture, your bank account, your, your TV, your pictures, your memories, your food, your boat. You know, it's everything we lose, every single thing that we have. The shops, a lot of the shops lose a lot. Some shops cannot even open, some shop breakdowns, they lose everything. Everything they lost in the shops. So we have to understand it's a great loss. People are taking this slight. The children lose their homes, the schools are displaced, parents are displaced, our culture is displaced, our way of living, all the churches are destroyed. Our religion, we cannot even go to church. It's a heavy burden, serious matter. I hear Mr. Reggie speak about when England was destroyed with the war. This is a war, we in a war zone. This Berrier put us in this place. So the island look like we had a war. And we have to come together, like Mrs. Ramage say, come together as one, be on the one voice, speak for one. So we all must come together. You can't stay home and don't come out and expect to know what is going on. Union people, you need to come out, voice your opinion and come together. Michael making a section, he make a point with the garbage. I am pleading, please, please, Unionites, mainlanders, visitors, all the persons living on Union Island. We all become one. I want us to keep our island clean, please. Take some pride, pick up. Make people accountable, keep the island clean. It's very important. We don't have problems, our problems is mosquito. So let's keep it clean, please. We dealing with tourism and we want it to be clean. I give thanks, feel listening here, I am proud of the ones that came out. I am happy seeing people that came out, and I'm proud, give yourself a hand. Help him, help him. Let them hear a voice, help him. Yes, nice love, one love.
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you. Somebody suggesting that they need more garbage bins? Something on the agenda, those to come.
Yes, I think we are expecting, they're going two, and we are expecting about a hundred and fifty.
As Michael just said to us, we're expecting about a hundred and fifty garbage bins. So garbage bins should be placed, will be placed throughout Union Island. So look forward to that, all right? And not only that we put them in place enough, we have to use them. One of the things that make them get destroyed. Now youngsters, listen please. A lot of garbage bins come with wheels on them, which makes it easier for the guys who usually collect the garbage to be able to bring them from one place to another easier and be able to dispose of the garbage in the truck. Now, a lot of youngsters usually take off those wheels. And when they take off those wheels, it makes the garbage bin difficult to move and it also topples over, it doesn't stand well. And it overturns and cause the garbage to scatter all over. So please, leave those wheels alone. I hope that each of us would be able to... I hope that each of us would be able to stop someone if they see them trying to go after the wheels, alright? So, alright, I, I like that. I hear somebody say we stop go after the wheel, alright? I think somebody else trying to come, come forward. Yes, Grant's on the mic.
Yeah, good night to each and everyone, eh? Yeah, I'm just saying, just to address this.
Mic up, mic up.
Yeah, I'm here to address certainly issues that's going on in the island, you understand? So there's many, but I'm just based on the main. Yes, as I was saying, yeah, um yeah, I'm addressing, my, my, my words is to the health departments and, and you know, these people. Um the fire, the fire, some of the fires that is being burnt need to be looked at, you know, where the he- health department is concerned. Especially the sheet racks and the black tanks and all these type of things, okay? You might look at it as being threatening because maybe, maybe, but what I was taught about, you know, sheet rack, which is a, a very serious thing in America, especially when people is being sued for, you know, cancer and all these things, ab- ab- um what's called asbestos. Asbestos, asbestos, all them, all the same word. Yeah, you know what I mean, and whatsoever. And I think now the health department and all the health, you know, whosoever is in charge should be coming around and, you know, even put up a little, you know, signs stating, you know what? Such and such should be burnt and whatsoever, because such and such if is being burnt now, five years, ten years from now, our, the next generation gonna be heavily affected by it. You understand me? And you know one going about giving, you know, even, even though you was to go, you can't, I know you can't meet individuals one on one and, you know, and give them a little counsel, but you could go to the shelters and whosoever and all these places and just give advice and put up signs and saying, you know what? Black tanks and such and such and such is very cancerous and a couple of years from now, our kids gonna be affected by it. I mean, I, I kind of old and gone too, so it could affect me now, you know what I mean? But to the, to the health department, these are the things that, you know, the most important thing. You understand me? Thank you very much.
Yes, good point, good point.
Even today, they had a big black smoke up there, I don't know, it, it looked like the whole world burned down.
Yeah, and you know, even, even with that, a lot of this smoke affects people who have asthma. There are lots of people here who have asthma and asthma is a very serious thing. I would want of course who suffered from asthma and to tell you, that is no joke. You understand? That is posed to death. You know, if you cannot get that oxygen that you need to survive. I know a couple of cousins of mine who have died because they couldn't get enough oxygen.
Roseman, I mean just.
You remember we said?
Also now, you see Richmond Beach?
Richmond Beach?
Yeah, wrong and maybe just go wrong in Richmond, yes.
Yes.
Right, I think around is all of a sudden is, is becoming a garbage heap, also for the same sheet rock burning and all these type of things.
Pond next to the quarry.
Yeah, you understand me?
And along that stretch and other things are being dumped over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, that is something that's a big concern because we still have tourism coming up, tourism months coming up. And if we keep destroying our tourism product.
Yeah, fine, go dump inside for this thing and take it down.
You know, so we have to be mindful of where we dump this, the debris or the, the stuff that we collect uh from our yard and so forth. We have to be mindful of that. Because you dump it there, then you still have to go back again and find some mic to clean it up. And that's even more money to do so. So let's be mindful of that. Anybody else who wants to step up? Mic is open, yes there, thank you. I think this is Young Miss Ramich.
Uh good evening everyone, I'm a Ramich, uh daughter of Marine Ramich. I'm also Ramich. I'm a foreigner, but Union blood, during the. Um I think a common theme or question that's come up is how to get the information. So people didn't know about the meeting, people don't know about the name of sheet rock, people don't know where to get various information. Is there an office or an officer or a bulletin board or a webpage to turn to for information? This just feels like this is a mini here, it's a lot of word of mouth, so if you don't hear about it, you don't know about it. But if there was some sort of central repository for that information or data to get your answers, uh questions answered, that might help a lot of the miscommunication that's going on. Um yeah.
Good point, good point.
Thank you very much, that's a very good point.
Good point.
Very good point. Now what I can say is that there will be a few notice boards that was, is gonna be set up. I think one in Ashton, one in Clifton. Back in the day, we used to rely on those notice boards, right? And we would know what is happening on the island. I think we're going back to that. Uh because the social media, not everybody has access to the internet. So not everybody gets the information. So the notice board will have to do for now. Just to strengthen Miss Ramich's point. Who knows what is the E O C? Any of you guys know what is the E O C? Anybody in the crowd know what the E O C means or where it is? You see, your point is well taken. The E O C is the Emergency Operation Center. And that is that building, which is the Tobago Keys Marine Park Building, uh or Office. That is what is called the E O C. So when a reference is made to the E O C, go to the E O C, it's that building. That's where the people who are given the duty of looking after us, whether it's distribution, administration or whatever, that's where that happens, at the E O C. So you see, just to strengthen that point, a lot of persons don't know what that is or where it is. And we need to make sure that everybody understands what is happening on the island and where to go to. Now, the other thing is, there are lots of organizations on the island. We may not know what is it that they're doing or if you are able to approach them and ask them questions about something that you may need. Like for example, I O M. You may see persons with that T-shirt. You may see persons with a T-shirt, React. R E A C T. You may see persons with a T-shirt, Gumbo Limbo. And you wonder, all these people there, oh, we know what they're doing for us, you know? Those people are here to assist us and they assist us in different ways. Like Gumbo Limbo in particular, Gumbo Limbo is the gentleman and his friends, Canaan, which is Mister Ian Weiss. They have put monies towards our recovery. And so they have put persons on the ground to ex, to help us to get to that point where we should be. Where we should be feeling much safer and secure, alright? So that's Gumbo Limbo. And with Gumbo Limbo is React, which is a set of persons from the UK who are ex-military, who go to disasters and help people who have been in disasters, to help them to get relief and help them with work and so forth. So that is React who works also with Gumbo Limbo. Then you have I O M. I think they are International Organization for Migration, I O M. And I O M, they are the ones who have joined with um Gumbo Limbo and others for to help us to get our roof on. I think it's about six hundred roofs that is supposedly be um repairing. My numbers may be incorrect, somebody could help me. I think it was five hundred, but it was brought up to six, I think it was. Yeah, some priorities that is supposed to be, alright? So that's I O M. And I O M have given relief, some of the solar, solar lights and tents and so on, have been relieved. Um with that, then you have another one called W F P. World Food Program, alright? W F P. And W F P is what, the organization that is helping us with a lot of relief as well. With the kitchen, um providing food and so forth for us and kids, workers and so forth. And they have other things that they plan to do. Uh if I may let the cat out of the bag, I think they're gonna be helping households, like giving them a few dollars. Not gonna say the, the exact numbers yet because I do believe that it may change or if it's not gonna change, well, I don't wanna say it out loud, but they are going to help families, households with monies that they can spend to bring themselves back, to get the economy even going further, alright? So that's something that's coming. Um you have another organization. Uh Red Cross, Red Cross Society, they have been here as well. Giving out a lot of relief coming from also a brother, um uh Cozy and Cozy Skirt, who is with the Latter Day Saints, they have brought a lots of, of um relief materials and have given it through the Red Cross to help us as well. So the Red Cross has been charged with using, using those relief um materials to ass, to assist us, alright? So these are some of the organizations that are on the ground. You remember um Cent, World Central Kitchen? Not Kitchen, is it World Central Kitchen, am I correct? You remember that? And the world that they did, man, I tell you boy, I missed them. Only miss them too? Only miss them? Seriously? I, I missed them, you know why? Because when you get work, 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 trying to get things done for people and then you say, oh shoot, you know, I eat yet. And to run to go home and prepare something, that's a difficult task. But guess what? You are able to go to one of those outlets, line up and you get something to eat.
Yeah, that is true.
Understand?
Yeah.
They have taken us, some people may not take it, there was much, but it was a whole lot. They have taken us from very far to where we are now because we were able to have a meal and one important meal, which was lunch during the day. So we missed them. I missed them for sure, alright? I know they're trying to get us back into the cooking mode and so forth. I feel the restaurants are trying to start up. I see more and more startup restaurants coming about. And I try to make sure that I give them business, you know? I, I buy more than I can eat just to help them to keep going, alright? And encourage others if you can buy from them, get them going, you know? Anyone else? Time to wrap up is coming soon. So I'm giving someone the opportunity. All of you youngsters, go, go step up, you know? You know? You can speak up, say what it is that you, you, you're concerned about, what is it that you like?
Somebody is saying something about.
Fisherman? Yeah. You wanna say something, me after fisherman? Come on, step on up, man. Alright? If you say it from where you like, I could, I could pronounce it for you. Yes there?
Um.
Come right now.
Just really quickly.
Yes there?
There's a rumor going around about vouchers. I don't know if you've heard about this.
Okay.
Um apparently, uh there's vouchers that people are being asked to be in in exchange for material. Is this true or not? Apparently it's an online.
The question being asked about vouchers. I myself am not uh well informed on that matter. Um that's something that we will find out and if possible, let you know, right? Um vouchers, anyone have any information?
Yeah, good night everyone. Yeah, I know there is the food voucher that Mister Jeremy.
Okay.
Jeremy has given out because he had approached me with the idea and he, he took a, I think it's a hundred, a hundred invoices and um distributed them throughout the community so that those person whom he would have handed them to, they come at my shop and um they will get a hundred worth of goods. So that is for sure and I think he did another set in Clifton. Alright, so um his idea is that he's trying to support each family member by giving them some extra food stuff so that they can prepare their own stuff. Well, you know, in the early part of Beryl, in the first week or so, when, you know, everyone was shocked to see the destruction of the island. You know, I was rather surprised when I left my shop in Bordeaux. I was licked up badly and came down. I was amazed that Beryl spared my parents' house here. Randall's house, Nadia's house, Masani's house and Miss Moore in this circle. So you know.
In a spare mine.
And Nadia also, correct. So we opened, we opened our homes and within these three houses in particular, we were hosting like about a hundred folks, right? And you know, everyone came to me so that I can give them groceries. So I was supplying Nadia with the grocery to cook for Randall's house or house, my house. So you know, at the end of the first week, I looked at the shelf and the shelf was empty. Now, I had some bills from the merchants of Vinci. I was racking something like forty thousand dollars that I ordered stuff for during the month of June. So the forty thousand dollars bill has not been paid yet. And I have given out almost, you know, all the stuff so that every one of us could enjoy the meal. I wasn't thinking about the bill. But then one of the merchant called me sometime to ask me how I'm doing. And I said, well, you know, things are coming along slowly, but we are still suffering from this disaster. And it gently reminded me of an invoice, right? So, so I said, well sir, when I looked at the shelf and there is nothing on the shelves and I looked in the till and there is no money there. So we have a problem.
That is cold one.
I don't have the goods, I don't have the money. So he said, where are the goods? I said, well, I gave all the people the goods so that we can eat. So he said, that's a good thing.
What's the bad part?
I said, well, what's the bad thing? He said, well, the bad thing is the bill is still outstanding. So I said to him, so I said to him, well, listen. See what you can do to shave off something from the bill. Because as it stands today, there is nothing there to pay. And by the way, I close up shop to go on the road, gang, to work, to get money. My gang cleaned Dry River, which was the worst of the work. When we cleaning Dry River now, we are snatching some of the concrete that fell and the mud is flying in our face. I got mud flew straight on my lips. If my mouth was open, that was going straight in my mouth, you know? But we did our best and um, you know, they decided that um we were working too well and um they let us off early.
You got fired.
Or some said, some said we got fired. Some said we got fired. Well, my team members, you know, I, I, I said to them, I said, listen, um, you know, as bad as things are, you know, hopefully we will get something else. Now, the thing is, I personally went to work to get extra money so I could kinda save that money to help pay the bills in St. Vincent. But a lot of people didn't look at it like that, they look at me as though, you know, I am one of the people with the money up there.
You should be paying the gang.
I said, nothing is wrong to have that perception that I have.
Yes.
You know? Whatever I have, when my customers come and they cry to me, I feel it good. I give a lot of people stuff and I have to go and find money to pay, you know? So the overall thing is, is the community spirit that we still have to look out for our brothers and sisters, you know? Some people commented that um Mister Wilson here, um you know, should not be treated well because apparently he has. And I said, no, you can't do that. I said, Beryl did not. I said, Beryl did not fear the rich and hit the poor. Beryl visited every one of us. So everyone is considered to be ungrung zero. So we should look out for our brother and our sister. So those who seem to have should look out for those who don't have, you know? And those who don't have will continue to help one another in whatever small way it is. Because being in a place of union, union, there is no place that is named like us. Union Island. The unity of the people is being shown by the name. And therefore, we are the ones to continue uniting with one another. There are times that, there are times that we will get angry with one another, and we may want to say things about one another. But when that is done, you cannot hold that against each other. We have to live tomorrow.
Yeah.
And when tomorrow come, we forget, look, the rain came in the form of seawater and decided to wash everything away. And who is still holding grudge against one another because of what you did or see two years ago or four years ago? You know? So the Lord has taught us a lesson, that our wickedness to each other has been, or supposed to have been washed away by Beryl. And each one of us now are at the feet of Jesus, humble and low, on the same plane, so no one is greater than no one as it is right now. So then, going forward, we hope that we all can learn a great lesson from Beryl, who came and visited us. The woman was strong and mighty, wanted to teach us as men that, you know, that we are to humble ourselves, and that we are to continue to love one another no matter what. So in going forward, we know for sure all the homes will be fixed. We just have to be patient, but yet you cannot have the patience and sit and do nothing. You know, you have to continue to go forth and ask the folks who are in charge of all of these materials to continue to support us. There may be a little anger and vexation come along, but don't take it out on them, because them fellows themselves have their head full of all the responsibilities. So we have to still commend them in the work that they are doing and continue to support them in the things that they are doing, so that they can get the courage, you know, to continue to do well.
Amen.
Thank you, Vincent. You know, as he said that, right? And I knew it was on a very good note. And there's something I have to pay attention to, bring everybody's attention to. Now, this is a very serious thing, and twenty people didn't realize that, right? Now, he has just told you what happened with him and a couple others. But what has happened to other business people? Now, many of us, and I said us, because it was me as well, we were looted, right? We were severely looted. And as he pointed out, that many bills are owed. A lot of us still owe the merchants in St. Vincent. And that loss that many of us sustained, I was looted twice. Many of us who have sustained that loss, many of us may not be able to recover. Many of us may not be able to pay that bill. And so, we'll have to go out of business. Now, we, of course, had the luxury of having many stores to go to, to shop here, to shop there, to shop iTunes, to shop in, 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 in a valley, in Campbell, wherever, right? We had that luxury. But this looting that took place, that because some of us not to go back into business, has now reduced the amount of stores that you will have available to go and shop by. So now, when you have fewer shops around, it means that there is less competition. And when there is less competition, you know what is gonna happen?
High price.
Price is going to go up.
High price.
So when those who figure they get away with looting, the stores and them and everything, you will pay for it later with the higher prices that they took up. So you have done yourself an injustice, not just to the people who have been looted, but you have done yourself an injustice, because now you have to pay more money for the product. You understand?
Amen.
We are talking about Union Island, and that should not have happened.
No.
We were supposed to protect each other. We were supposed to look after one another. Look at Mr. Mills' place. Mr. Mills' place, hurricane didn't do too much to it. But guess what?
Loot.
People broke it and went in and looted the man. And now look, he can't even open up like others. Same thing with me. They went in and put up barricade and they go in again. Man twin Clifton, his place didn't break, and people deliberately broke his glass and went in and looted the place. Why is that? The old Union Island boy, if I were to tell everybody, old Union Island.
We don't have time.
We have time to tell you, the old Union Island would have deal with it. But listen, we need to stop this thing. Even homes, people's homes, those who are abroad, whose home got hit by Beryl, and they went in and looted those as well, took this, took that, and so forth. Why, why we did that? We are supposed to be our brothers keeper. This is not what we supposed to be doing. We have to look after one another.
Yeah.
And I hope going forward, this thing about stealing stops. I hope that we stop that thing that's called stealing. Opportunities are there for you to be able to go and make a few dollars. Get up and get that opportunity and make a few dollars, so that you can purchase what you need. When you see somebody with something, don't envy them. Just get up, go and buy it with the money that you have earned, alright? I hope that we do that going forward. Please, Mr. I want to say something else, thank you.
And one other thing that I noticed, um, those of us who are getting goods from the mainland, you know, in the early days, we have the boat coming on Monday and on Wednesdays, and you will get your cargo for free. But lately, most of the merchants are being sent back with the goods and saying that you will have to bring them on the bay that you have to pay. But we are still, we, we, we are still.
Recovering.
Recovering. And.
They treating us bad though, yeah.
I don't understand that one, that, that, that one is bothering my head, because if the government is chartering the boat to bring the government stuff to us in Union, why is it that the goods for the stores are being rejected? So now, they want us to continue to pay seven hundred and dollars per item, okay? But yet, on the free days, they do not want to accept your goods anymore. Now, it means that when we, the merchant, have to pay, we have to pass it on now to the customers, and you pay a little bit more. Because in the early days, when they used to send the stuff and we used to get it for free, I had to lower my prices, because I'm not paying on the boat to get it. But recently, you know, they are turning you back and saying that you have to come on that particular day whereby you have to pay, which means no more freedom. So we need the government to look into this, because it is quite evident that we will order stuff to come on Monday. Graves and the rest will call and say, they didn't take any goods. They say the boat is full, only government stuff that they are taking. So who is the freedom for now? It's just the government stuff alone and not the people anymore? So now, so this is something that the Recovery Council need to look and do.
Yes.
So that everyone can really benefit after some.
Thank you, Fitzgerald. Anybody else?
No.
I hear that he wants to say something.
We never say so. Back to the.
So I, if there's no one else, I think it's safe to return the mic back to.
It's been a good meeting.
I, I do believe that it has been a good meeting.
Yes, yes.
Give us that a round of applause. Nice, nice, nice. Very, very interactive.
Yes.
Yes. So, my brother? Turn the mic over back to you. I think you're the first thing you want to.
My hot, hot, hot Union on fire. Burning but in the water, do out. Can't out when you in a water. Can't out if you in steep weather. You wet last night, you cold, you need some, run the music, Mr. DJ, run the music.
Run it, man.
System is going fast.
Patrick and Lord, what is this? This is.
You know, um, I don't know if a lot of people ever thought of this, um, we actually were destroyed and separated, um, you know, when the shambles. But in terms of having a gathering whereby we can really thank the Lord for keeping us alive. I mean, if you look around and you see the destruction that really took place, I mean, it is amazing that nobody died, really. You know? Because when you look around, there should have been debts, more debts. But the Lord has really kept us safe, and, you know, for such reason, we need to come together to give thanks, to praise the Lord for his goodness towards us, despite we losing our homes.
Very good.
He has kept us and give us the opportunity again to restart, which also means we have to restart our own lives in connection with the Almighty, who has given us another chance again to see another day and to restart, and we can start much better and stronger. So without the strength of the Lord, you know, we can't do it. So tonight, just before we close, I guess we will give a good community prayer in thanksgiving for our lives to be spared. And, you know, to encourage each one of us around to continue to share the good news to our friends, despite whatever took place, we have life, and we only have life because God has really spared our lives.
Yeah, thank you, Fitz.
Unity is strength. Unity, we all belong. Union Island. I have to call on everybody here tonight, whether you on this podium. First of all, members, I want all of you to be up here, standing with me. Dying, being alone, and what have you. Get up, all of you Recovery Council, get up here. You can't hide from Union Island, and we're gonna find you anywhere you're there. Keep the music running in the meantime, now, people are young again. Very little sack, a lot, a lot of Asian people with your pains and aches and heartaches, pain and. Wait, 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 wait. Madame President, you know, get away from this one, you know? I'm up there.
I'm coming, I'm coming.
Michael stand up here, Michael, hold the thing. We gotta get the president yet. Now, ladies and gentlemen, I'm begging everybody in the area, in the vicinity of this, with all hands, even with the music playing, play the music! All hands, you see the music? Give God our. With all. Keep us alive after. Lord. It was born a child, every baby. Personally, I have a. I was born here, raised here, when you school here, when you truckload the thing here at the board, I have never seen anything like it, even in the grandest guy. Alright, let's hold hands and pray.
Hold hands, sir. Rashida, come in there, please. Come in, come in, come in. Guys, over there, hold it, we can't tell the man. Hold hands now, the hold hands. Come on up now, like, come on up. Drink? Come on up, come on up. All the hands, they come with me. Hold on, guys, man.
This, this is just the beginning. Hold on, everybody come together, the hold on. Let me thank that we united, that we unity among the. And the love we must show for one another and to keep our island. As I said.
I wanna go there, I wanna go there.
Union Island.
One island, come in, come in.
Australia is a small island that you say is big, the island. It's too small to be called a continent, so they call it an island continent. But listen, we are a little duck, and they have to call us Union Island, they gotta call us an island. So you see how strong, oh, this little island.
Come up, come up, come up for the whole ass man, come up. Black man, let me do this, let me do this. Don't exclude yourself, come on, man. JJ, come in the man.
Let's join together, let's join together, show the unification among ourselves.
Come on, hold on, man.
That is what one think of.
We are one island.
To join and be together. To make this seem a bit agree. Cannot ask the Father for anything, because if he hates one another, he gonna say, you know this man, you don't know that woman, and you hate him, how can you love him? That's what I say. Because you don't, never see. So we have to love one another. I want to show that love to one another. Say, yes, I love you, because what you do to one another, you love one another.
Yes.
Okay? Let us, uh, throw a prayer and pray to give the Heavenly Father thanks and guidance. Almighty God, our Heavenly Father. We thank you for the days of our life that we have had. We thank you, oh God, for the unity. We thank you, Father God, for the peace and tranquility that we enjoy each and every day. We pray, oh God, you continue to uphold the standing of the way forward. And we pray, oh God, you share with us wisdom, so that we can be guided, so that we don't try to be self-righteous, but be obedient and respectful unto thy status, so that your Holy Spirit takes control over us. We pray, oh God, that you continue to bless us all, and bless our children, and our children's children. Bless our land, so you can feel it, so you can bring unity and love among ourselves. We pray, oh God, that we obedience and respect, Father God, that we can continue to join hands, one with another, and to bring peace and love among all people. Here, as we continue our journey in life. And pray, oh God, that you will be there in our going, in our coming, in our sitting, and in our uplifting. Now we pray and ask all this in the name of the Lord and Savior Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Amen. Hip hop, hooray! Hip hop, hooray! Now give us your music. Ready music, loud and clear.
Your held hands, your held hands? Did you hold hands? Yes. Right there? Yeah. Are you gonna stop now? Recovery Council members.
These are the council members. We have Don Reddick, we have Mr. Owen, we have the secretary police, Fifty, Fifty Royal. Roseman, Chris, Carl, Alan, we have Mr. Mathias, Kias, Bud Spitz and myself. We have a few other members. We have Fred, Harry, Nicky. We have the people tonight, Mr. Brock, Eddie, and Star. Reddick, Eddie, today. Going for work, going for work. Give thanks. Thanks for tuning in. And may God continue to bless you all over the world.
Alright, good night, everybody. So I have a point that I want to make, right? So on this block, right?
Let's stop, please, let's stop, let's stop.
Well, on the corner, right, there's a group of young men that normally lines here, right? And it is the general consensus that we just be on the block, do nothing, right? Roseman made a point and said, yes, opportunities, yes, there are opportunities, but then again, there's nepotism. And with nepotism is nepotism, nepotism is.
Take a good time with it, yeah.
You're having, like say, for instance, um, you have a family member within a business and they're in high position, right? And they choose who they want to give work. And the basic problem there, we will go out looking for work, asking around for work. But at the end of the day, we will not get any work. So there we just come on the block, we line, we do our daily things. And then people just go, they run them out and say, oh, we on the block, we not doing anything. But then again, nepotism is the problem. Nepotism is on this island and it needs to stop.
Yes.
Thank you, boys, thank you, boys.
Give me a bounce, man. We need more like you to come forward. That is one thing as a teacher in school.
Don't be scared to talk, don't be scared to talk, that's your opinion.
I, I will tell everybody this. At age sixteen, I was a teacher in that government school up there. And the one thing I used to tell all my students, you see me? I've got you behind if you don't do a work, but don't be scared to come and tell you have a problem.
Going on for life, going on for life. Thank you all for listening. Thank you for your support. Going on the life, people still want the line, but the line is finished, phone is going dead. Give thanks, appreciate, God bless. Appreciate everyone, stay up full, give thanks for life.